All right, let's get started. First order of business as always is any commissioner would like to discuss any of the preliminary items for next board meeting, which will be May 17. I'll give you a second to look through it.
I do have one chair, number seven, but my only concern is which streets are we speaking of on this one? I know it's probably in the full package.
I'm sorry, what number are you asking?
Number seven. I was just curious to which roads they were speaking of. I know it well, where, as well.
Ms. Rogers, can you answer that?
Is this one for ITB 20-09?
Zero eight.
Zero eight.
Number seven.
Okay, number six? Oh, it's number seven on them. Okay, I understand. Mine is different.
Let me see. Yes, number seven.
I can make sure I get that over to you. I don't think I have the contract yet, but we'll send that over to you first thing in the morning.
I thought it would be with the full package.
Okay, yes. But I'll make sure to get it to you in the morning. Okay? Thank you.
All right, are there any others?
What was that for the?
Preliminary items.
Oh, well, because it's already going to be discussed tonight, so.
Okay. Which one?
The one about the mask and.
Okay. All right, here and done then. Let's go to our first discussion item. It's Resolution 2022-80, and that is dealing with the standing procedural rules as it relates to board appointments. Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and Board. I am going to present our standing procedure rules, and I suspect that when it came up on the agenda, it's like, what is this talking about? So summary of our presentation is going to just be a quick overview of the rules, discussion of some of the policy implementations, and discussions of next step. So basically, these standing procedural rules are the rules that basically govern how you all operate, and these are common things that are done throughout other counties. DeKalb County, Cobb, and Fulton, among others, have standing procedure rules that they govern or they adopt to govern how you all operate. And it's more of an operational aspect opposed to legislative. You know, of course, you all have your ordinance that governs other things, but these are operational issues. So there's three sections, since we're just starting this, procedural rules. First is appointments to public office. This is relating to the at-large discussion that you all had. Second is relating to, this is a recommendation, your approval of how you approve your zoning applications, and then how to amend your standing rules. So I'm going to start with the first, which is appointments to the boards. And this basically applies to a situation where the law allows you all to appoint people to boards, authorities, things along those lines. It does not affect, obviously, any elected officials. So there's two types of situations. One is for per seat, and that's for if there's five seats that are on a board or authority, then this is how this first situation under number one would apply. So just explaining how this language reads, chairman of each commission, each of you all would have one person to appoint. So if you have five people, or you have 10, you each would apply, you know, point one or you appoint two. Only that district commissioner or the chairman can fill the posts. In other words, if someone, if you make a nomination, Commissioner Hambrick, and that person is not approved, no one else can appoint that person other than you. And the second situation is where it's at-large, and this is where the total number of posts is less than five, or, you know, between six and nine, some number other than equal five, 10, or multiples of five. So in this instance, the chairman or any district commissioner can nominate a person, and if that nominee fails to get a majority vote, then any other board member could nominate somebody. Again, the at-large nominations shall occur in an orderly fashion. In other words, the person who makes the nomination is recognized by the presiding officer, and as recommended by Commissioner Franklin, that the board will consider whether the nominee's appointment reflects diversity of residency within the county. These are for at-large. Again, for vacancies, the same thing. The clerk would notify the board prior to next board meeting and inform that commissioner or the chairman how the nominee was appointed, whether it was per seat or at-large, and that vacancy is filled versus based on whether it was filled per seat or at-large. So that same process would apply. And so let me give you a couple of examples. For the Board of Election and Registration, you have five members, and so that would use the at, the per-seat process. Chairman of each commission would nominate one person, and that vacancy is filled by that appointing commissioner, whoever the vacancy reflected. The second would be the land bank, for instance. There's four members that's appointed by the BLC. That would be the at-large process. Any, the chairman or any commissioner may nominate a person. The board considers diversity of residency in the county, and if that person or nominee fails, the chairman or any commissioner can nominate another person. And so some policy considerations to consider is that whether, now, the discussion that this board started off was whether the at-large appointments should reflect residency. Do you want to also consider diversity of residency for your regular appointments? Now, you may already do that, but you could decide whether you want to codify that or put it in your standing procedure rules that when you make your own appointments for your per seat, you have to consider diversity of residency. And I've made the language a little, I said you all should consider, but you can make it where you must appoint somebody for diversity. The pros, obviously, that you'd have a more diverse representation. Obviously, the cons is it limits the number of people who are available. So you are, instead of pulling from almost 300,000 people in the county, you're pulling from however many people are in your particular district, and of that subset, how many are qualified to fill that particular seat. That's a decision for you all to determine, how you want to do it, but that's one policy implication. I'm going to come, well, so let me ask you. I can stop here, and then have you ask me some questions about how you want to address this, or I can continue to go on? How would you like me to?
I think it would be prudent for us to go ahead and ask any questions now as these sections come up. That way, we can discuss it and then move on to the next point.
I do have one. For me, yeah, diversity, it's not a mandatory thing for me. My number one would be qualifications. What, do they have qualifications that they are adding a return of thought and investment on that board? That's number one for me. So the diversity is a distant two, and not mandatory.
Okay.
But I think it should be considered, though.
No, I think he's talking about diversity of residency.
Yeah, right. And, yes, and so the diversity of residency, whether you can make that where it's mandatory that each person must appoint somebody from your district, or it's just something that you all consider?
No, I agree. You know, if we find somebody, I've done that before. There's someone in the county, not particularly in my district, that I have appointed to a board or two, and all, and I think, I wouldn't want to change that.
You said you would not?
I would not want to add that. That would limit us, you know, to qualified people and other things, too. I just like the way we have it now, that it's up to us as to who we appoint and all that. I would not want to add that language.
Yeah, but with all due respect, Commissioner Hambrick, that's what brought on this conversation, was if you're not going to consider the residency from each, or an appointment from each district, then you might overload one board with more people from one district.
Would you like to order it, Board?
Okay, and, well, and I'm thinking that a particular, a particular commissioner having more appointments than the other commissioners or whatever, as, to me, as long as a commissioner per district or whatever, and chair, has a chance to appoint someone, I think that's, to me, what counts or whatever, because I'm trying to think of the development authority at one time.
I think it still is.
But, but, those were folk that were selected by each district commissioner, though.
And so like, for example, in that situation, say if you had seven or nine, your first five would be per commissioner, and then the remaining would be at-large.
Right. And I think that's what happened in that case.
Yes.
So I don't want to change that.
So you're saying you're okay with just the, as long as each commissioner has a pick, it doesn't matter who their selection comes from?
Right, right.
In other words, their residency.
Their residency, right, as long as they're Clayton County resident.
Right. Well, that's definitely a requirement. Commissioner, I just think you have some?
I just said, I agree. I think the conversation came up basically saying that each of us needs to have an appointee from our district, and I think that's how we need to continue to have it. And then, like I said, as far as the at-large people, you know, all five of us pick someone, that way we can have, you know, we can have an equal amount of people from each district and representation as well.
Let me bring some clarity here. I hear the entire board, but the reason we are here is because if we left it the way that at least the majority is discussing it, then you're going to have, in particular, even with the land bank, to where you're not going to have equity. And when we're making decisions, we have to think about it from an equitable lens. It doesn't mean equal, but equitable lens. What that means is equitable representation. I, I get the fact that if each commissioner has that ability to be able to put someone on the board, that's fine, but then the argument comes in where we got four on a board, and that board is still out of sync, because majority of the county is unincorporated. So that's a deeper dive. Majority of the county is unincorporated, but the majority of that board are people who are appointed by the city, because there are seven cities. So that's even out of sync. So you're going to have people that are represented from the cities, which they have a lot of vacancies, which they have not reappointed people, and some people are coming off. You're going to have people from the cities making decisions about the unincorporated portions of this county. So regardless of this board, it goes to this argument that we are not making decisions from an equitable lens, and we're having to deal with those decisions that are put before us by these various boards. So again, if we were to entertain what the current majority of the board is stating, then that means right now, on this board that came up for question, there is nobody representing the lower part of the county, which is what I recognize, even in the zoning board. That part of the county was having some issues with decisions that were being made, and I pushed to them, you all need to get on this board. And so that's why we made it happen. Now, finally, with the four, with the four positions, which that board has to be looked at again, I'm going to say it again, but the four positions, then you have the chairman, if you go up with what you're saying, per commissioner or per person, because we make up the body, the five of us make up the body. So then that means that, well, you know what? You could end up like the water authority, which I'm going to address a little bit later. You've got majority of the folks in a certain area, particularly this five-year, running your county, running the water authority, and it's the same thing that happened in other boards. In today's time, people are conscious more than ever, and it's not fair to the taxpayer. At the end of the day, it's whatever the majority of this board wants to do, but those are the issues that I see. And so to answer your question of question number one, should per-seat appointment include consideration of diversity of residency? Even if I'm the long vote, I say yes. I think that's very important. I want to know that I've got somebody down there or in my area making a decision. And then the question about whether or not it limits, I'm not going to buy into that, because at the end of the day, we've heard it over and over again about Clayton County doesn't have this or that. All we got to do is get the people. We got to get a process in place, and that's the other thing. We have no formalized process for putting anybody on boards. Fayette County does, other counties do. They have people that have to go through a certain amount of training, and not to get into it, but we've had to deal with issues. We like to talk about lawsuits on one area, but we dealt with issues in the library system and other areas because these people did not have the necessary training, and we made decisions like we've been making it all along. So I do believe that we need to tackle it from a couple ways. First, residency and diversity should be considered. Secondly, the pool of people need to go through some type of training, formalized training, whether we agree that it's grassroots or whether it's leadership, Clayton, whatever that formalized training is. And we need to have a formal process, and you're not going to have this issue about the limit of number of available people, because I got folks calling me now that they're becoming what they call woke. So that's, that's where I am. But the majority of the board will rule.
Commissioner?
Yes. Well, my thinking is that sometime back, training for each board, I thought, was a requirement. I don't know if that's happening or not.
It is.
There is some generalized training as to the Open Records Act and the Open Meetings Act, but beyond that, I think the other training just been, depends on what board they're sitting on. There's not like a prerequisite of having someone trained before they get appointed to a board, and I think that's what Commissioner Franklin was speaking to.
Well, I'm, well, my thought is that once they are appointed, that they, you know, get training. And I do know a couple of boards that I've served on years past, that we were, well, not so much required, but that was one of the stipulations that we put on ourselves, was to go, even if it meant leaving the state of Georgia, but going for training. That's one thing. And the other thing, since a lot of this is regarding the land bank, is it possible for us to have maybe a different specification for the land bank? We have something like that for civil service. I'm trying to think of another board that may have something a little bit different than the other boards, but is it something that we can put in place that would have this about the diversity and all that, and so we'll have a representative throughout the county?
Well, I'll say, I'll speak to the land bank in particular. The way, while it does represent, you have more cities, there, each city only has one appointee, whereas this board has four. So unless you are saying, well, we don't want a particular city to have a voice in decisions regarding the land bank, there is a cap on how many people can be appointed on the land bank, and I'll have to find that number and get it to you, but otherwise, you would have to pull people off of the land bank in order to have the county have more people on there. And I'll double-check and make sure that there, what that number is, and I'll come back to you and provide that.
And each city has properties within the land bank, correct?
That's correct.
So they need to be represented.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying nobody, let me make sure I'm clear. I'm not saying the city should be represented. I want everybody to walk away with it, because I'm quite often misvoted, not saying that. I'm just looking at balance, and everything I look at is balance.
So with that being said, and you're looking at representation throughout the county, then we could, in that instance, when we have four picks and we've got four districts, I'm good with each commission district having a selection on that board, and I would only appoint somebody in the absence of a commissioner. If a commissioner should, you know, forget down to four commissioners, and a vacancy became available, then I would make that selection at that time from within the district that's vacant.
Okay.
That wouldn't allow him to do that with our, Mr. Reed.
Right, so I mean, now, so that's what I was going to ask you for. At-large, really, at-large means that all of you all have an opportunity.
To get someone.
Right.
And I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, everybody gets opportunity to make a selection. And what I'm hearing, at least a couple of commissioners saying, is that they would like to see somebody from within a district. So even with the code being at-large, that each commissioner could yield to the other to make sure that there is at least one person from each district covered on the land bank.
That's true. I believe we're speaking of the per-seat example rather than the at-large example.
Well, at-large, it wouldn't really apply, because it's less than four, less than, it's less than five.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, just, it's more of a courtesy thing to allow each district commissioner to have a selection, and I guess that's something that could be worked out without really a practice more so than, than the code, because it's still stating at-large.
I'm for the code. This is what we've done in our county, where I commend Mr. Chairman for relinquishing his vote, but at the end of the day, what we've got to begin to do is make sure that our code is in line with practice. We tend to practice, but it ain't got nothing to do with the code. So unless something is in here about residency, when it boils down to four, and remember, board, we're only talking about when it's four, that the residency comes into play. We're not talking about all the other boards. It's only when there are less than five and four. Without that language, then you're going off of, as long as we get along today, as long as everybody understands today, this is what we're going to do. This language is only for if it's below five.
Sounds like we are talking specifically about the land bank.
Well, no, I just used the land bank as an example, but it would be any board.
I don't know another one.
Assessors, tax assessors board.
Yes, there are others. Right, at-large, but I'm saying, but at least with land bank, we, there are four positions for us to choose from. I don't know of any other board that has that and city representation at-large kind of thing. I mean, to me, it's unique as far as other boards.
But the, these, and I'm not to put words in Commissioner Franklin's mouth, but the sentiment applies regardless. So if each of you all have a issue, then you want to have someone who represents perhaps your thinking sit in your district if you're appointing them. That's what the consideration of the diversity, and that's why I say it considers opposed to require, because that doesn't mean that you have to appoint somebody. It just means that you should be considering that as part of whether that person should be appointed to the board.
Okay, and I think that has been practiced when we have five on a board, that we all get a selection, and all, so is that not in writing? Or that hasn't been codified?
No, no. That's where we're going. That's why we're establishing these rules, to put it in writing.
It's just the semantics of saying consideration or mandatory.
Right.
And we should say consideration instead of mandatory.
Right. And right now, you all do not have standing procedure rules, so that's what we're trying to put in the writing to make sure you all understand going forward, when you all appoint people to boards, this is how you're going to agree to govern in that instance.
Well, especially when it's five.
Yeah. I agree with that. So I guess we haven't gotten to that part yet, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we're on the five, it sounds like you all are okay on, as far as you all just do what you normally do as far as when you make your individual pick. It's really for, when there's four, if there's a nominee and it's by order, so whoever gets recognized first by the presiding officer is the one that makes that appointment. So let's just, and I'm not picking on you, Commissioner Davis, just to say that there were two boards, he was able to, by virtue of being recognized first, appoint two people.
He got to have the revote.
True.
Exactly.
True. Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So whether or not, if the board deems that it needs to come from another district or another area, then they voted down.
Right.
Either voted up or voted down.
And so then you, you can determine whether you want to consider diversity or not. I mean, that's, that's kind of really more of an internal issue for you all to determine whether you want to have it. From, again, the, the process is, once it's at-large, any person, once this person is voted up or down, or voted down, can make that nomination. All right, so I'm, I'll come back to that. We, I'll, I'll circle back to, to that. So the next issue is really, I'm talking, you all have a practice of, for zoning amendment applications, but it's not written. And your process, really here, and this is in section two in the list, is really kind of setting forth what you all normally do. And that, that process usually is the district commissioner in whose district the zoning application lies makes the motion, initial motion, to approve, deny, or table. And then if that district commissioner is not present, usually you all, as a courtesy, will table the next, table that item to the next meeting that the district commissioner is president, present. Typically, you all would do that. And so this will basically put that in writing as that's what your process will be. Some policy implications is, do you want your presiding officer to make motions to approve, table, deny when the district commissioner is absent? Okay, that's the only one. Is, if you want, and the only reason why I bring this up is that with Commissioner Gregory, when she passed, if you've got several months going by, do you want things to just lie in space until a new person is appointed or elected, I should say? Or do you want to have the presiding officer to make that ability? Now, you know, I can write something that says that if the district commissioner's office or, you know, position is vacant, then that gives that presiding officer the right to do so, but that's really going to be up to this board as to what you'd like to see.
Well, for me, I believe that needs to be the direction that we go in, simply because I would never want the county to be stagnant, especially if we're waiting three, four, or five months to replace a commissioner. I think economic development or development continues, and we don't want to miss out on any opportunities, and then still at the end of the day, it takes three to pass any motion.
Can it be written that if it's, you know, more than a meeting or two, then we could go to the presiding officer, but if less than, say if somebody just happens to be out that particular meeting, that we can abide by holding whatever to the next?
Well, I can make it where, where is, if, if the position is vacant as a matter of law, is, in that they are not present for some reason or another, then you can default to the presiding officer, whoever that would be. And that way, it takes out that if for some reason the commissioner's traveling or in business or something like that, that, that the board doesn't do something in that commissioner's district that they aren't necessarily in support of or aware of.
I like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And then the last part is the amendment of the standing procedure. So it has to be approved by a majority vote, but I made it where it's no less than three commissioners. In other words, you have to have the full board in attendance to make changes to your standing process, and that the amendment needs two readings, and it has to occur at a regular meeting. Now, there's a couple, couple of policy questions about that. Why would I have it so tough? Because if one of you are not here, or say two, then you all could have two people who amend the, based on majority vote, amend your standing procedural rules. Or if you all had a special call meeting quickly and got your meeting rules changed, and again, I'm looking at when you all are not working together in harmony, how hard do you want these rules to be changed? If you want to require full board, attendance of the board to amend the rules, do you want to require more than one reading, because then that will mean that somebody's going to have to be present twice and then make a vote twice that you want to, you know, change that? And then do you want to allow amendment at a specially called meeting? That's really going to be a decision for you all.
I'll be.
Go ahead.
First, I don't think that it should be a specially called meeting unless there is definitely some circumstances, you know, but that goes back to the conversation that I had in email, not to hurt people's emotions, but the bottom line is the code is clear. We are a body of five, and unfortunately, during the passing of Commissioner Gregory, the body of four became the body of five as the whole. It's clear as that. It's a whole. Everybody has one vote. So in those circumstances, it may already take care of your last question. I'm not sure if it requires a specific language, because our enabling in our, our code, I think it's under a certain section, already identifies the body. So then the language is just being in accordance with the body. I do like the more than one reading, because again, it gives people time to think through it, and people don't always have the same questions the first time around, and they may think of something later. When I say people leaders, I apologize commissioners. And then the final thing is, I do think it should have full board attendance, but remember, full board means that, like, again, when Commissioner Gregory was going to full board, was four, based upon our code. That is the body.
That's correct. And now, and it would, it would apply in that instance, because you have a vacant And that, and it would, it would apply in that instance because you have a vacancy.
Correct.
Really would, would be, um, the, um, where you wouldn't necessarily want to have where some, two commissioners are traveling, and you've got a quorum, and then you have two people who vote to change your procedural rules.
Right.
And the other ones aren't here.
Correct.
That won't work either. Dead on. I agree with everything she said. How about that, Commissioner Franklin?
All right, so I will leave the amendment portion.
You've got a lottery ticket? Because I'm gonna win tonight.
Um, I will leave the amendment as it is, because that will cover the situation that you, um, raised, and when there's an actual vacancy, um, and also keep it where you all have a, an option to reflect if you need to make any changes. So let me go back again, so I make sure I'm clear on the at-large. You do not want to necessarily keep diversity of residency as a consideration, or you do?
I hope we do. Uh, because it's not mandatory.
That's the word, consideration, not mandatory.
Correct. It would just be a consideration.
Yes, and consideration.
So let me be specific, and I, I'm not, I want to step on your toes, I'm Madam Vice-Chair. Go ahead.
I know, go on.
Uh, just, um, for, make sure that I'm hearing it clear, like, for instance, specifically the land bank, I reviewed the land bank, and there are someone representing every district except District Three. So District Three, because it is, they got issues down there, they should have somebody representing them on that land bank. So because it's four, then what I'm hearing is, with the language that's put in there, it would be considered, and therefore that vote would go to the district seat to have somebody there.
And, and, and the way that, um, yes, so you consider it in the sense that, again, if you all are being considerate to one another, recognizing that each of you already have a person there, they would allow you to make that vote. Um, but as the rules are at present, the first person to make a recommendation that's nominated by, or that's recognized by the presiding officer would make the option to appoint somebody, but the board should consider whether that person reflects diversity on that board.
But you had some language talk that I read, I want to make sure I didn't miss it. Um, and I think that takes care of it, and then the other part, residency, would be second part. There was something about, let me find it. However, said nominees shall occur in a orderly manner, blah, blah, blah. Said nominees shall be appointed to the post upon an affirmative majority. However, the board shall consider whether the nominee's appointment reflects the diversity of the residency within the county. If the nominee fails to receive a majority vote in favor of the appointment, any district commissioner or other chairman. So I think, I, I don't want to leave chair out, but the bottom line is this, it just needs to be from each district. I want it shored up in the language, if you all don't mind. I think we have to make decisions beyond who's on this board right now.
And, and I'm, I'm good with that, simply because as chairman, everybody throughout the district would be representing the, the chairman's seat. So I'm, I'm good with district commissioners make that, but it's a thing of courtesy.
You got another lottery ticket.
So, 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 so if myself, I'm making appointment from District Four, and there's already a, it's already appointment in Districts One, Two, and Three from the diversity rule that we're speaking of, that means that I would have to make a appointment from District Four. Is that what that's saying? That's what I'm hearing.
Now, if you make it where it's mandatory, yes.
And, and I don't agree with that.
If you, if it's just a consideration, then you can make an appointment from any district.
Correct.
As long as they meet the qualifications.
Like I say, I base it on qualifications first, to make sure that we're getting a high return from, of, of that person on that board.
But, let me, let me caution us about the language. Nobody's saying that qualifications aren't first, because this is the same argument that they use not to put affirmative action in place, to be honest with you. It's not saying qualifications is at first, because when we say that, we're saying that no one in other districts are qualified. There was a time I remember, and it was even before, uh, the, the, and I want to say senior, but the most experienced commissioner on this board, uh, Madam Vice-Chair. I remember when we spoke years ago, and there was hardly anybody on these boards. And I remember meeting you, Madam Vice-Chair, and then people were out searching for folks. So I think we need to be cautious, although I understand the spirit of where it comes from with Commissioner, um, Davis, but I'm safe and comfortable in knowing that out of these four districts, somebody qualified and could do these jobs, and on the, and represent on these boards. So I, I don't think the question is qualifications, it's really whether or not each area will have proper rest representation, because these boards are making decisions for the county. And again, I'm going to say this because it's a, a majority minority board, we need to be careful with, I understand your intent, but what we're stating, we need to be very careful. There's always somebody qualified, you just might not be looking.
Mr. Chairman, um, I just want to say, what I would like to see is equity, you know? It has nothing to do with qualifications, and, and we do, we, we have enough common sense as board members to put someone in that, that is qualified. But we have to have equity across, across this board. And so qualifications are definitely a standard, but equity is definitely a standard as well. So when we're looking at things, you know, as a board, we have to be equitable across the board. So that's one thing I want to focus on, equity, making sure everyone has someone here to serve that is qualified, and making sure that they have a voice when it comes down to their district and things that need to be done within their district.
And furthermore, we don't even have a qualifying process. All we do is throw names out there, and it's like bidding. Get your name up there first. So there is no, we don't even have a qualifying process to have a qualifying argument. We need to develop a qualifying process, and then we can say people aren't qualified.
That would be my next, uh, recommendation for your standing procedure rules about how you decide on who you're going to nominate. But for now, I mean, I guess, it sounds like you all, at least some portion of you are leaning towards making it mandatory that they represent somebody?
Yeah.
If we have four.
Four.
If you've got four.
That's only four.
But let me say this too, as far as qualifications, I, I can't speak for everybody, but when I look at qualifications as far as appointing somebody to a board, I have my own process for that.
Right.
And so I want to make sure, to everybody's point, that whoever's, uh, selected, has the qualifications to, to represent us well.
And I do the same, but again, somebody's qualifications might be, can they cook biscuits? Well, I mean, that's no free, no centralized qualifying process, that was the case, we all have A's in college. So I, I get it, I get it. No disrespect, I get it. But I think we're good on where we're going.
Yeah.
And it's only when there's four.
But when there's qualifications, you want to look at resumes and things of that nature. So we need, like you said.
I think that's up to the individual commissioner.
That's fine.
I mean, I have my process anyway.
Okay.
I don't just throw a name out there. I know that if it's the library, I want somebody with that experience, or, you know, I mean, I have my own process.
Well, you do commission, but these folk behind us may not, you know?
So what I will do is, I'll make, I'll say something along the lines that however for, uh, where the number of persons exceeds four or more, the board shall, um, appoint a nominee to make sure that there's diversity of residency within the county, or something along those lines.
Right. There's room. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Sounds like we got to.
All right, I will, oh, quickly, my next steps, I'll make your changes as recommended. When do you want to bring this back? Do you want me to bring this back in another work session, or do you want to just go ahead? I mean, right now, it's on the board, uh, on the agenda for the seventeenth.
How, how about just writing it, oh, you said it is on there?
It's on the agenda for the seventeenth.
Uh, how about, uh, sending us a, uh, the revisions?
Yes.
Send it to us, let us review it, and if there's any hesitation on any commissioner's, uh, part, then we'll take it off and hold it until next meeting.
Okay. All right. Um, that's all I have.
All right, we will not be hearing from I to verify or tax commissioner, so our last discussion item is Resolution 202290, uh, face mask policy.
Okay.
Mr. Reed.
All right, um, actually, I, I thought that Chief Merk might be here to give some background, but here's.
Well, he already gave us.
Oh, he did give some information about the back, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right. So, um, again, quickly, I'm just going to give you, give you a quick overview of what's already in place now, and discuss what changes are there in the next steps. So currently, uh, this board adopted Resolution 202166 in August 2020, and that current resolution requires face, requires face coverings over your mouth and nose, as defined by the CDC. Again, that requirement is not applicable to courtrooms, to polling places, not available to pers, or applicable to people who are unable to put on or remove their mask, they have objections for medical or religious reasons, or, or children who are less than two years old, and for those people who are eating. And it also didn't apply to people on residential property or commercial businesses that did not adopt that, um, face covering requirement. So, um, the board was to provide regular education regarding mask wearing, and law enforcement was required, was going to provide warnings versus citations for non-compliance. County employers would continue to provide services to non-mask wearers, and the county would provide masks to those who, uh, did not have masks when they entered county buildings. And again, this ordinance was based in part on the state public health state of emergency, although you all have authority under state law, um, to, um, establish, uh, your own criteria for, uh, handling, um, issues relating to, uh, public health. So, under this proposed Resolution 2029, 202290 will make masks optional, and again, that's based on the, um, the vaci, the vaccination status, the CDC's low, uh, ranking of the county, um, there's number of whereas clauses that, that talk about, um, uh, what the state of, oh, uh, okay. It talks about the state of where things are in the, um, in the county, that at least as of May third, eighty-two percent of people in the count, in the United States had at least obtained one dose of the vaccine, at least fifty percent of Clayton County residents had had at least one dose of Moderna, Pfizer, or Johnson and Johnson. The CDC rated Clayton County's community level for COVID-19 as low. Um, however, the CDC does still recommend, uh, mask or face coverings when people have symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19 in indoor public transportation settings. Um, and the state of Georgia, of course, no longer has a public health state of emergency. So, um, again, this new policy doesn't apply to polling places or courtrooms, um, because, for two reasons. Um, there is a state law that deals with covering your face that, um, that was told during the public health state of emergency, and the county does not have the authority to, um, circumvent state law. The second area is that the courtrooms have their own, um, standards for what they're going to do, for which, uh, they will dictate what they want to see in their courtrooms. Uh, the county will continue to provide masks in strategic locations within the county. Symptomatic persons will still be required to wear masks. Employees will be, could, continue to be required to found, follow the county policies, and that businesses, instead of them adopting, they could, and under the old ordinance and under what was there in the governor's executive order, businesses could ask the county to help them enforce it. Really, if they want to have masking, they can just enforce it on their own, like they've been doing. Um, the county will continue to provide education about mask wearings. Non-compliant persons will continue to be warned first, uh, and if approved, would go into effect on, um, May, uh, seventeenth. Um, and so that's basically, that's basically it, um, and I just have any, I just, I'm open to any questions if you, um, have any.
Yeah, let me say this, you know, I truly believe we're at a point that we can go to the optional state or, or phase. I spoke to the Department of Public Health, and they reported, I think in the last two weeks, there was like sixteen actual COVID cases, uh, in the county. We've also purchased and erected, uh, mask dispenser machines at the most heavily used, uh, buildings, so that when people come in, number one, prior to this step, if we take it or not, uh, people who didn't have masks can get one out of the machine. Uh, i- if this is adopted, then those who come into the buildings, to include employees, could still access the mask, uh, from the, the mask dispenser. So I believe we're, and we're still, uh, doing the aerosol spraying at some of the locations. So I think we're still taking all the precautions necessary to try to keep the numbers down, and nothing keeps us from, uh, revising the mask mandate, should we see an increase in any of the numbers. Any other questions, statements? Well, Mr. Reed?
All right, well, the, again, the next steps, um, it's on the, if there were any changes, we would make those changes, uh, determine when you want to adopt the policy, and then we'll add it, it's already on the agenda for the, um, for the seventeenth.
Okay, so the first part, the, uh, standing procedure rules, like I said, if you would just, uh, once you get it written up, to send us a copy, let us review, and address any of the commissioners' questions that they might have, and if any of the commissioners feel like, uh, we need to have further discussion on it, then we can always remove it from the agenda on the seventeenth.
So how, how does that affect, uh, the board meetings? You know how now we have everything spaced out, or whatever, people can or cannot come in with masks? Or will we continue with the spacing?
Well, that could be, I mean, a policy decision, I guess, but, uh, I, if we're not going to, part of the spacing came with the mask, the mandatory mask, uh, order. So I would assume that if we got back to normal in terms of making it optional, unless the board dictated otherwise, we could allow more people to come into the boardroom. Again, that's a policy decision, so if the board says, keep it like it is, uh, but still make it optional, then we could do that, or we can just start allowing more folks back in. So what's the pleasure?
Um, we think on it.
Yeah, so we'll, so please provide any, uh, feedback that you might have, because it will be on the, uh, seventeenth agenda. All right, anything else?
May fest is Friday. I'm looking forward to seeing Howard Hewitt. He can sing, and he still look good. I'm excited.
Yes, please come out. Anybody else? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.